Richard McManus.
Pete Dinkos.
Martha Taylor.
So Martha, we have the meeting minutes and I want to ask you for some of the December financial reports. Do you have those as well?
Oh, yes, sir.
You do, okay. So, meeting minutes, are we to be approving both November and December?
Yes.
Okay. So let's take them one at a time. November 1 was where we had the A and R plan come in, the OSRD at Coleman Road, and the initial resubmission of the Borrego Solar. Has everyone had a chance to read these minutes? And are there any questions? No questions, no questions. This is November 1 when they were first presented. The only thing, I had a typo on the third page, third paragraph, last line, where it says revised to include planting of new trees two among. And I think you need to drop out two. Did you see that?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that was the only thing that I found on it. So if we have no other thoughts or comments on it, can I get a motion on this to accept the meeting?
I will approve the minutes of November 1 as of right.
Okay. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion at all? All those in favor? And approved as amended or with the two exonerations, right? Second group of meetings minutes is Wednesday, December 6, 2017, where we welcomed our new planning member. We had a financial report master plan update, but it was mostly about Borrego. And these minutes are rather long, six to seven, and I want to make sure that no one has any questions about them.
We could wait.
Has everyone else read them enough by any chance, or do you?
I agree.
Okay, then we can approve them. We can approve them. Okay, may I have a motion?
Will we approve the minutes?
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
I can.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. These are quite comprehensive and I appreciate them. The financial reports? So for those who were here last time, remember that we have this new procedure where the chair has got to read over some of the actions that were taken in terms of financial reporting and financial statements. So the payroll warrants for the town planner was Martha. Payroll 1812 for pay period ending 12/9/2017, and PR 1813 for pay period ending 12/23/2017 were signed by me. Wait a minute. Yes. Oh, right, yeah. Because I was away the 23rd, but I think I...
Yes, you did.
And then expense invoices, employee expense reimbursement of 1206 I signed, but I think George, you signed the Verizon.
Yes, I did.
All right. For the planning iPad monthly service. And so that's a report to the public about what we've been spending some money on. Thanks, Martha. And now the liaison reports for the Board of Selectmen.
I'm sorry, because we've been meeting for a while. So the next one will be next Tuesday.
Okay. CBA?
CBA, I don't have the minutes for the comments on the 21st, but I do have a report on the 40B hearing.
Oh, you do?
1218. Towns Traffic Consultant was there to review and had reviewed the material done by the advocate. One of the concerns was that the choke point for that street is out at Central Street, and they suggested to take the study out to that choke point. Then Pearson Drive. Pearson Drive's entry is also narrow, and further up, there are other choke points in the road which are narrow. And there was discussion about having the town or somebody widen it. Traffic consultant did say, if you do that, there's going to be more speed and that might be more dangerous. Good suggestion. And also a concern about accidents in that double road coming in, because some people are confused about what is the entry and what is the exit.
Yeah.
Depending on what direction you're coming in. I have to address that. Let me, let's see. Since I don't have my glasses.
Not that one.
Our environmental consultant has discussed of site what they had. She checked on the location of vernal pool in the area, showing the plan, which I don't have. And that's been evaluated, but the evaluation was difficult at this time of year, but it has been sized and determined the extent that it's been marked. There's also wetland in the center that is now certified to be a protected wetland. Not large, but it's there. And the concern is to also the fill material at the beginning of the road. There's some fill that's been there for a long time, but no one knows where it came from or what it consists of. Doug Packer had several comments on conservation. And the next meeting, let's see, January 22nd, and also Woody Campbell, we have a period review done by that time.
Did they give any response to our letters? Did our letter went in? Or comment on their comment?
Right, there was no response.
No response to it?
No response. But the 21st meeting, people are looking to have some decisions made, I think.
That'll be interesting.
Yes.
So the plan that you suggested, they made some changes to where the wetlands were?
Is that right?
And so did they change the plan?
No, big package of wetlands. It's a small piece. Nobody didn't know.
Okay. You were at that meeting, though?
Yes, I was.
Yeah. Anything to add?
No, I'm going to change the topic.
Okay. The ConCon?
We had a public hearing to amend the existing order of conditions for the driving range on December 27th. We had the public hearing.
Oh, you did?
We had some members attend. The Carbaloni family was represented. Meeting went very well. The presentation was well done. They covered the issues. We reviewed the revised plan, added a few conditions that were really pretty minor, confirmed that the additional conditions imposed by the selectmen and by the planning board were included, and then moved and approved to close the hearing and approve the NOI with new conditions.
Okay.
So we're done.
So you're done. That's excellent.
Now, there's some reference to continuing dialogue with you and Martha around some things, but that was already decided.
Right. We're actually looking for some opinions from Town Council as to how we might want to proceed with some of those things. But we don't really have a definitive position on that.
We have some guidance that we can discuss.
Yeah. Maybe bring it back in our next meeting with you all and see what you think about some of those things. On MVPC, the meeting that they just had was their Christmas meeting, and so it really wasn't that much. But didn't you have a meeting recently with Angela on the housing production?
Yeah, I had one last week with Angie and Karen on the housing production plan, just to kind of take a look at the sites that we had identified for the housing updated, give them an update on Coleman Road. So they will be looking at having, giving a presentation to the planning board and the Board of Selectmen. So we'll need to look at some dates for that because they...
Do they have, do they, well...
Looking at late February or possibly early April.
Okay.
So we need to discuss and work around schedules.
Right. Okay. So maybe late March if that works for everybody else. Might make sense. Anybody going to be away late March?
I'll be here.
Who's that?
I may be away.
Right. Just let Martha know what your schedule is. Okay. Okay. Well, I'm pretty satisfied with the work we've done at MVPC on the housing production plan. I think it's well worthwhile.
Yeah.
And I think they're really going about it in a very professional way, so that's good. Okay, it's 7:15-ish, and I want to reopen the public hearing for the special permit application of 2.795 megawatt solar energy generating system at 136 Main Street, applicant Borrego Solar Systems. So we have a lot of information that has been presented from various sources. We did get all of the eastern stuff that we sent out to board members. We got Rob's information, which was a combination of a direct response to your concerns that were raised, and then also a analysis of property values, et cetera. I kind of leave it up to you, but my instinct is that it would be worthwhile to go through a detail, which is really what we asked for.
Sure.
A detailed analysis on the part of Borrego and respond to the concerns that were raised by the community. And maybe do it this way, or the presentation, whatever the best way you want to do it is one of those. Does that make sense to you guys?
Yes.
Yeah.
Other words, review.
Yeah, we'd do this thing.
Right. And Rob, it was a presentation. Do you want me to hand these out to board members now?
Please, yeah.
Is that okay?
Sure.
All right, I got my mini version. I need to have a Maxi version. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mrs. Taylor, Mr. Habery. Happy New Year. Call them before the storm, I guess, for tomorrow night anyway. So since we last met on November 3, I think that was November 3 or November 6, or about...
December 6.
December 6.
December 6.
Jeez, they're all running together.
December's future.
I know today's January, but I got that one down. Have submitted a couple of items for your review. The first was essentially taking the itemized list that Mrs. Greco handed out at the last hearing and just adding on to that. So that was essentially just a spreadsheet, and there's a couple of additional columns that have been added. And what we've done for that is gone through that particular, each individual item, and addressed each item as it relates to either the special permit review criteria or the Mass DEP approval, and tried to sort of categorize those, which in our opinion have been addressed by Massachusetts DEP already, and those that would be remaining for the planning board. Of course, obviously, that sets up to your determination, not ours. But, and also as part of that, have referenced where in the materials, the application on the stormwater report, that information can be found. And so maybe to start with, one of the things I would like to ask of the board is if we could have an opinion from Mr. Habery as to the approval of DEP items, covered items, in relation to the special permit review criteria. So specifically, if there are items that have been raised by DEP that were addressed through that, through the resumé in that application package, if, in your opinion, if that would be, if those items would essentially be closed. And meaning that if DEP has reviewed and approved, that those would then be closed. Our position, and of course, it's up for your determination, notice, is that the items that have been covered by DEP are closed and that we have roughly about 18 remaining items that would be under the special permit review criteria. And so we're prepared to kind of present on all of them, but you'll see that as this presentation goes forward, that they're organized as such. DEP.
So you're putting that specifically to Paul?
Yes, well, asking if he would, if he would, yes, if he would approve.
I think what I, before opening up the call, just to see if board members have a thought on exactly what Rob has asked us, which is where do we sit on the DEP process in terms of whether those are closed issues, or should we really just leave it open to Paul? And let's hear from Paul.
Let Paul have a decision.
You guys okay with that? That's what we're going to do.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it would be a bad idea for the board to put itself in a position where it's second guessing the DEP with regard to compliance with DEP standards. So you certainly don't want to be looking to do that. I think it may be helpful if you've got some assistance in sort of reviewing what DEP has done and how it impacts your requirements. So if you wanted to do some sort of peer review of that issue, but without asking for a reexamination of compliance with DEP standards. If the DEP has made a determination, it would be arbitrary and capricious for this board to come up with a determination that's different. However, you are not engineers, you're not wetlands specialists, so I do think that getting the opinion of someone and the interpretation of someone as to how the DEP decision impacts the criteria with the special permit bylaw is certainly appropriate.
A reasonable thing to do.
Yes.
And so I had thought of something like that, because when the project was challenged and it went into, back into DEP, and they really was there for an awful long time. And we didn't have much to do with the project. And I would like to have a technical guy go through that.
I agree.
You know, and say, well, here's what, here's what happened, and here's why it happened. And as a explainer, I, you're right, I don't think we're looking to second guess.
What we do have is a bylaw that lays out a number of findings you're required to make.
Right.
I think it's helpful to have a peer review consultant who will tell you, this decision by the DEP is something you can rely on to make your finding regarding the issues.
That's right. So with that, and to, I guess, define it, we would, our peer review guy is Joe Suwaka, who we work with on nearly all the projects in town. And so what product would we send to him? What do you have that we could send him for peer review?
I think probably the, I think probably two items or three items would be the special permit application, which has all of the correspondence essentially since the April 27th approval.
Starting?
Yes, the special permit application. So that has, that addresses specifically the special permit review criteria, as well as the DEP approval process, and then the various corresponding letters and responses in there. So there's that document, there's the stormwater report, of course, which was the basis for the review, and then the designs, of course.
Okay, all right.
And I think that should suffice. But actually, what could help facilitate that process is just, is that spreadsheet, which, I apologize, I know it's lengthy and painful, but trying to just be methodical about how we go through everything.
Martha, you have all these documents and you can get them to Joe post haste?
I've got the, I've got the link, so I know that it's often easier to deal with hard copies. I do have one remaining hard copy. I don't know if it would be possible for you to...
Sure.
...to send him one. That might be better, so that we can keep our extra review copy here. So I can, I'll contact him tomorrow if possible, and I can give you his contact information.
Sure, happy to do that.
Okay.
Yeah. So that'll be, yeah, that'll be...
Yeah, all right.
Yes, so it'd be basically the documents that you gave us for the special permit application, as well as the...
As well as the last itemization of things. Yes. Okay, wonderful.
Okay, you guys all okay with all that? All right. So, and I think that we, on the assumption that we will be meeting again in two weeks, it would be expeditious and wonderful if Joe could have something to us before the next meeting.
Yes, that'd be great.
Okay. Is that all right relative to your question?
It is. I do differ a bit respectfully, Mr. Habery, that I'm not sure that you need to review DEP criteria again. I don't think you need a third-party review of DEP. DEP is the third-party review, and...
But what we're doing...
Yeah, to clarify, I wasn't suggesting, I was suggesting exactly the opposite. I don't want him to review again for compliance with DEP requirements. DEPs made that determination.
Okay.
What I want is really an explanation to the board as to what happened in that process, but also a review of the special permit criteria and a determination as to whether or not the DEP decision is support for the findings that they need to make for this decision.
Okay, sure. That's not an unsubtle difference. I mean, we're not asking for them to do a peer review of the decision process that DEP went through. We want to find out what it is that the DEP has done and how does it affect our process. I guess in its easiest way, that's what I'd like to know.
Sure.
Because I don't know.
Understood.
I just don't know.
Okay. And hopefully, I admit there's a lot of material, so it may, this may not happen, but hopefully that's what we accomplish tonight as well.
Okay.
I've tried to outline the, where the review criteria are addressed in the DEP review process. There is overlap, and then the items where there is no overlap stated as such. So, yes, I understand.
Okay, all right. Great. How about it?
Okay. So first of all, I'd like to, you know, address, you folks, the Butters want to let you know that we really respect your concerns and the issues that you've raised. By no means is this a process that we feel we've tried to railroad through or even put together even anything that's an average project. I've based my career on exceptional water quality, stormwater management projects, received several environmental merit awards from EPA, and I work both sides of the fence. I don't work just for the developers, I work for folks like yourselves. My role is to come in as an independent person with a set of expertise. But I want you to know, or feel comfortable anyway, in that you, your involvement is a really positive thing, because what you get out of this is you make sure that this project can be the best project it can be. And the process protects both you, the Butters, the owners, as well as the developers, in making sure that everybody is very clear on what the expectations are and what folks' rights are. So with that, I want you to know, really not, I wanted to start off with that because in the last meeting, it felt a little bit as if we were, it's becoming contentious, and of course it's going to be. It's an emotional process, but just want, I really want to put that one out there, so, thank you. So this is just a quick piece, we don't need to spend a whole lot of time on this, but as we know, the application was initially submitted on June 17, 2015, and then was withdrawn without prejudice in October of 2016. It was then approved through resubmission on April 27 of 2017. The primary updates, and we'll go through these things item by item, is that the tree clearing has been reduced, there's been additional site survey. We contracted for the review and assistance of a wetlands and habitat specialist to provide feedback and review. We developed the project based in accordance with the stormwater management standards in the Mass DEP Stormwater Handbook. And it includes the protection of critical terrestrial habitat and vernal pools using current guidance recommended by the Army Corps of Engineers. The project has also been reviewed by the fire chief since our last meeting, and additionally, we have a tree mitigation fund containment that we have prepared using the same methodology that was done for the Middle Road project as well. And Martha, I haven't, oh, actually, you do have that in front of you now. So the project timeline, assuming, obviously, the approval process would be approximately, what is that, one, two, three, four, five, six months in total in construction? It's really about four to eight weeks really for all the on-the-ground work. And then when I say the remaining four months is really just the erosion stabilization control process as you go through with the revegetation and all of those pieces.
Steve, is that the job with Middle Road, is that about the same construction process?
Yep.
The ones?
Yep.
So now, the various slides that we've got, and if you want, we'll go through all of them. But what I have done here is I've organized them in the same manner that is in your, in that 11 by 17, yep. And on the bottom of each slide, I've listed whether or not it was a DEP approval element, in our opinion. And they're, and one thing to keep in mind is that there is, there's a fair amount of overlap, not a fair amount, there's an enormous amount of overlap from one comment to the next. So you'll see some of the stuff is repeated, some of this, in some cases, we try not to, but just to be complete, simple here. So, and what we've done is we've taken the information from Mrs. Greco's spreadsheet and really just brought it in here. So starting with item one and one A, one B. So first part we presented is that the bylaw does not prohibit, does not prohibit the proposed use here. What we have here is a use that must meet the review criteria for being approved. I know I'm stating the obvious here to all of you folks, but I just want to make that point, know that solar in this type of land use is an acceptable practice, assuming the review criteria would be that. So conservation of natural resources, I think we've all heard these pieces, but we'll just kind of go through it item by item here. So we have, there's a tremendous amount of conservation of natural resources that's occurring. There will be non-project parcel conservation areas totaling about 57 acres, of which 34 acres is upland habitat, 22 acres are wetlands, and this provides for the long-term protection of critical terrestrial habitat. In the context, the larger context of the project, the project impact is 12.6 acres. That's 18% of the non-residential component of this parcel, or only 13% of the total parcel when you include all the properties involved. There are no more than three trees that are cleared within the 50-foot buffer in proximity to the vernal pools, and panels have been removed in close proximity to those areas. The tree, the current proposed tree removal is for 1,642, and that's down from the initial present, the initial proposal in... in, in March of 2015 at about 2,300 trees. And then again in, in January of 16 at about 1,860 trees. So, as I said, the, the full project impact is now down to 12.6 acres. And you can find this information in the, in these various materials here. I'd like to point out the, the letter from Tom Liddy from Lucas Environmental in Appendix O of the special permit, really goes into detail as, as, as far as the habitat impacts. Essentially, it's a, a review of the wildlife habitat assessment that was conducted.
So Lucas Environmental, that was your consultant?
That was our consultant, that's right.
Yeah, okay.
And if you recall, I think we were asked to, to bring somebody on board who was familiar with upland habitat vegetation in part for the vegetative screening.
Right.
And that was, that was, he was part of that process.
Okay.
So, this, this figure you, you folks have seen before. And what you see here is the three different levels of clearing that have been proposed in, in time here, and we're down to the, the green item now being the, the least, the least amount of impact in the, in the currently proposed area. And what we have here is the, this, this upper table here is a, lists the amount of trees cleared within the vernal pool buffer zones at the 25 and the 50, and then at, at 100 feet from the vernal pool buffer. And then, then our total numbers down here.
What's the, the, either the roadway coming in, what does the green and the red mean?
The red was the, was the January 2016 application.
Like right-of-way?
That's an exist, that's just the access. This is the current access road. It's an existing car road to the areas where
No, no, right, I know that, but I just don't. So what is the proposed access road?
Oh, sure, so right, right here. It, it, it is through the red area, but which is now the green area, so it just that
Okay, so it's less.
It is less, that's right. So, moving on to, to one C, within the bylaw, the prevention of the light and pollution of the environment. Again, we suggest that this has been covered by, by DEP. But the, the project was designed and approved under the new draft DEP requirements. These are in-house requirements, but it's the highest standard for environmental protection in-state at the time of approval for solar projects. Additionally, this includes information that I've used in other projects around vernal pools to, to good effect, which is the 2010 Vernal Pool Directional Buffer Guidance from the Army Corps of Engineers. And the 2002 Best Development Practices for Conserving Pool Breeding Amphibians in Residential and Commercial Developments in the Northeastern U.S. These are both, for those in the know, those are very, very important documents. And the fact that we're including that in our development practice is a big deal. Just as, as a tangent, among the planning board in my town, and I, we tried to get the town to adopt those recommendations, they fell out of their chairs. I mean, it was not, it's a big deal to, to have a lot of those elements in there. And it really steps up the, the level of requirements in there. And we'll, we'll go, and we'll go into some of those things. Needless to say, those were not adopted in our town. So, the project was designed to minimize the long-term impact from operations and maintenance through a very detailed operations and maintenance plan. It has, that includes many non-structural best management practices that are from these vernal pool guidance. When I put in "non-structural best management practices," is that, are we all clear on that? Or am I sort of talking verbally booth on that?
Probably.
verbally booth. So, a best management practice is just, it's, it's what, it, it can be something that you build, like a retention pond, that's a structural best management practice, or an infiltration trench. A non-structural is, is basically more of a behavioral thing. Like a non-structural thing would be street sweeping, or oftentimes it's source controls. You cover the, the salt shed, right, so that it can't be ragged upon, I guess it is a structure, but that's, pollution prevention practices. Okay. Minimizing vegetation clearing and timing to avoid amphibian migration, the prohibition of fertilizers and pesticides, and the prohibited use of de-icing chemicals. These are all items that are recommended in the vernal pool guidance. And, and those are, those are for the, the, the long-term impact. But then of, of, of real important significance is the, the protection of the critical terrestrial habitat. So that's, what that means is that you have a vernal pool, a wetland area, that the amphibians are spending a portion of their lifespan, but maybe eight months out of the year they're in the uplands. So, our practice in general is protect the, the wetlands, because that's what the Wetlands Protection Act gives us authority to do, but we usually don't have the authority to regulate the critical terrestrial habitat. That's what we're doing hereby through that protection. No disturbance in the 25-foot no buffer, no structures within the 50-foot no build, and 100-foot separation from most potential vernal pools. Increase the most appropriate use of land throughout the town. So the bylaw provides for ground-mounted solar arrays, does not prohibit their siting, so long as the review criteria are met. We believe that this is the most appropriate use through the combination of both environmental and public safety protection elements and provides for sensible development practices. In contrast to what you've heard, there are actually lots of examples of solar facilities in residential settings in Massachusetts. And I'll, we'll go through a few of those here. So, first one, being in, in Mill Road. This is a zone residential, it actually had been historically prior to the owner rezoning it for a proposed, for the proposed commercial piece that never went. But what you can see here is that we, whether it's zone residential or not, we have a home here, we have homes here. So there are houses, the closest house is within 200 feet. The next closest house is within 580 feet, not substantially different than what we're talking about with the Courtney Drive folks. So that's one, one here in town, admittedly, it's not zone residential. But that project, I'd like to, oh, actually, I want to mention something here. So this project was completed this year under the old DEP rules. So there basically are no stormwater controls. And I sort of make my living doing site inspections. I, I've been out on that site and I can tell you that there is no obvious concentrated runoff where erosion is occurring. The, and the reason why I say that is if you look at, at what the, what the site looks like when it's done, it's, 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 and this is within, what is this, four months of growth?
Probably not.
So this is four months of growth, and we have really good vegetative stabilization on this site. And we would assume we would have the same, same success here, it's the same seed mixes, et cetera. But it, it's not, you know, we, they're, they're not higher than 10 feet at the tail end, they're not so high that, that erosion occurs. We have all, all these various pieces here. And they're, they're, you know, they're not, I wouldn't say unobtrusive, but they're well below the tree line. You know, these things are only standing roughly 10 feet high. So, from a distance, they're, they're, they're not going to be observable. So some additional ones, I, we just picked five to point out. This was part of our economic impact analysis that we did for solar. Here's a 2.7 megawatt solar facility in Beverly, Mass. I don't quite remember what I'm looking at here, this is, so, oh yeah, so here's this, here's the solar.
Yeah, try that, try that, yeah.
Did I do that?
Just for the time being. Just for the time being.
Okay. So, solar facility here, and there's a whole bunch of homes in this neighborhood, right, right along here. And, and many of these closer than, than 400 feet, 435 feet that we're dealing with in Courtney Drive. So this is in Beverly, Mass. Here's, here's one that's in Shirley, Mass. Steve, would you do me a favor?
Yeah.
I've got some batteries in here. There's just a single battery.
Yeah.
Yeah, why don't you turn it off actually for a moment?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, here, I'll turn it off.
That's the one we walked on. We walked the one in Beverly.
So, we go back. Okay. So, the, the one to the right is, is on Rockin Road in Shirley, Mass. And, and a fair number of residential homes on all sides, as well as up on the other side of the road. Another one in Hardwick, Mass. Yeah, we have many of these directly visible, you know, in areas that have been, you know, that were open previously. Another one in Ayers, Mass, close proximity to homes kind of on all sides. And I think I have one more. And, and this one on, did I do that one already? No, I did not. I think I just I did.
Yeah.
Either I pasted the same one twice, or, or I messed that one up. But in either case, just a nicer picture for you. Did I put the battery in the right direction? Word time of healing, right? Sorry, folks. Okay, so moving on, lots to talk about. So, and this, this raises the question of whether the project is injurious or obnoxious to the neighboring properties. Further on, in, in this presentation, when we get to item 11, I provided a detailed little bit for you on the economic impact analysis that we did. But to summarize it, we, there was no observable, thank you very much, no observable negative effect. And, and in, in contrast, the, what we found with, with the value of open spaces, which we'll talk about in a little bit, was it had, it has a very positive effect in comparison to, say, residential development. So, gosh, where am I going here? There we go. Oh, I see, it just doesn't want to go on the, like, that's the problem.
It just doesn't show up.
It doesn't. Okay. So the revised application includes improvements for screening vegetation on the northwest corner of the facility. We've talked about this a lot, and a few slides down, I'll show you the layout that we have for this. But the, the closest we are currently is 435 feet from the nearest residential building. The other residences are between 440 and 850 feet away. The project is located deep into the parcel and will not be visible from local streets. It's 1,100 feet from, from North Main Street and 1,600 feet to the northwest. And, and it will not adversely affect the character of the area because it would be observable. And in terms of injurious, the project is, as per review, special permit review criteria, this is built and will be built in accordance with the National Electrical Code. So, just to elaborate a little bit on the screening, the applicant is committed to ensuring sufficient long-term screening using native trees. Let's see, so how much of this have we talked about? Most of this. So there are, there are no, oh yeah, so there are no storage facilities or buildings proposed as part of this project, so screening applies to buildings and storage facilities as well as structures. And the, the tree plantings, well, oh, that's actually working that time. The tree plantings are in a line of over 440 feet, using both existing native tree species as well as dense, fast-growing arborvitae that are, that would be planted in an overlapping triangular pattern. But want to say that if there's concern about the fact that arborvitae are not native, there's no problem with switching them out. We felt that that was a choice that was made, we thought, because the, at the request of, of the neighbors, because they're dense and fast-growing. But there's, there's plenty of good alternates out there that could be considered. So the current list is the arborvitae, the eastern white pine, and then the eastern red cedar, the last two of which are native. And that'll be done in, in combination with the existing large mature trees. So this is, this is what we've been describing before. So what you'll see here is this is, this is 440 feet long. They're planted in a triangular overlapping pattern. So what that does is it helps initially, prior to the trees being large, you have the standard approach before they fill out. And so that you have adequate screening. But just to reiterate what we, what, what we've expressed before is that the applicant is committed to working out the screening to the satisfaction of the neighbors. And if that means planting more trees, if these are, this is found to be insufficient, they're completely willing to commit to that. So then, continuing on with review criteria, so item 2C would be, is this in the best interest of the town? And so the project is located deep into the parcel. It will be screened from the butters and nearby public streets. Items that would discourage the appropriate development and use of adjacent land or buildings or impair property values are typically operations one can hear, smell, or something that has some other source of pollution. The solar area does not qualify for any of those. You don't see it, you don't hear it, you don't smell it. It's a clean passive use of the land that includes substantial permanent protections for wetlands and upland terrestrial habitat. Furthermore, the acoustic study that was submitted as part of the special permit application, it was done, I believe, in 2015, determined, and you can quote here, that the removal of trees will not cause a perceptible change in highway noise at the property lines of the project's closest of butters, and the proposed solar panels will have no impact on reducing highway noise. Charlotte Holmes, any questions?
No, I think, I don't know.
Should we do lights back on so everybody can sleep?
Sure.
May I self-include?
Mr. Light guy.
Okay, so moving on, item three, from the review criteria. Item 3A, just referring you to response 1B. Item 3B, revised tree count that will, that even has been performed, we've talked about this. So remember, the, I apologize, I know a lot of this stuff seems very redundant. This, we're just, we're kind of rebutting the, on a line-by-line item, what was in there. So, I'll, I'll probably skip through some of this stuff unless, unless you would like to me go elaborate on these items. So, the revised tree count has been performed, and there are plans in place to minimize environmental impacts from the project. So during installation, erosion and sedimentation controls will be maintained, and the appropriate stabilization through the project will also, throughout the project area will be maintained. When the system is in operation, there's a long-term O and M plan in place, and there is the, the decommissioning fund that is, that is part of that in the, in the event that the project goes wally up, or if, you know, during construction, or if, if long-term, when it's ready to be decommissioned. So wetlands and vernal pool impacts will be minimized. So we've, we've talked a bit about this, and I feel, you feel very strongly that this 100% is covered under DEP. DEP is, they have a process for certifying vernal pools. This is the core element of the wetlands protection. DEP is, they have a process for certifying vernal pools, um, this, this is the core element of the Wetlands Protection Act, and, um, and DEP, certainly recognize this, as, as, as you'll see, uh, in the, in their responses, that we enumerate later on. So now on the criteria 4, uh, the project minimizes tree clearing and has been reduced, uh, or reconfigured to reduce disturbance. So, uh, first of all, point out that we, we acknowledge, uh, that significant tree clearing will occur. The potential for clearing on this parcel exists, uh, and could be larger for residential development. Bylaw does not prohibit tree clearing, but rather discourages tree clearing and minimize cutting. And we believe that we have, we have, uh, proposed now, um, um, multiple iterations that really get to the minimization aspect of this. We've talked about the, oh yeah, so there were, an element in there refers to, um, uh, protecting, um, the valuable aspect of, 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 uh, of vegetated areas or for trees with water management, cooling, and climate benefits, um, that trees provide, um, and that the conservation of, of the 56 acres, goes a long ways to, um, uh, ensuring that. Um, when, and, and here's one that may raise a few eyebrows, but I, I actually, um, I, I thought of this when I was, uh, driving home one day, and, uh, was, was just, uh, struck by the resemblance. So, when you evaluate this project in the full context, it actually resembles properties that are commonly protected as wildlife management areas. Okay? So if you ask yourself, what's in a, what's in a wildlife management area? The forest proportions are comprised of upland habitats containing all the various species, uh, and the fields, forests, and wetlands make this ideal habitat for a variety of wildlife. Show you, I'll show you a, a beautiful site that's near where I live, it's the Connor Farm Wildlife Management Area. Yeah, it's right on the major freeway, um, and, um, it doesn't look substantially different than what we're proposing here. There are, uh, large open fields that, uh, continue to be paved and used in their, um, historical use. Uh, their, the property can be logged in historical use as well. Just the fact that there's a disturbance doesn't eliminate its habitat value. And in fact, um, the northeast has more forest now than we, we had when the settlers arrived, and that has impact on wildlife, believe it or not. Uh, the open fields are, uh, survive, provide a, a very real benefit. Now, while deer are not going to get under the fence, uh, that, um, solar panel, uh, small, um, small mammals, um, and, and other, um, animals that can, that get under the fence, birds, et cetera, will be able to use that area. And so i- it's not as if that area is paved and serves, uh, zero value, and amphibians are not going to be stopped, um, uh, by, by a fence that's six, six inches off the ground. The applicant is, uh, committed to ensuring sufficient long-term screening using native trees, uh, we, we've talked about this. Again, this is just a, uh, a rebuttal to, uh, item 5, uh, in your, in your packet. Safety impacts. So safety impacts have been evaluated, uh, for flooding up to the 100-year, 24-hour storms. This is 100% a portion of what DEP does, um, uh, as well as the town has a requirement for, um, evaluating whether or not we're in floodplains. That's both a, a state and local requirement, um, so we're not within FEMA flood maps. And, uh, something that, that probably, uh, unless you're a water resources engineer or geek, you, you, most folks wouldn't have, um, made notice of this, but we used, and I use as a prac, just as a standard of practice in my designs, a, a more conservative design storm. So, um, Massachusetts yet, hasn't yet adopted the, what is it called? The Northeast Regional Climate Center Revised Storm Depths. Some towns are doing it, um, FEMA is now using it, they did it for Millsex County, um, but we used a, uh, a nine-inch, 9.12-inch 100-year storm event, which is 27% larger than what was required. So, uh, the idea that, that we, that, that the safety impacts have not been evaluated, um, they absolutely have, and it really, and it, in a conservative sense as well. Entry 6, um, submission requirements, um, and required documents. So there was, um, a statement that, that we, we did not bend a, a public outreach plan, uh, as per, per requirements. We followed, as far as I can tell, to the letter, uh, of the law from what we were, what we were, what we were instructed, um, uh, by Mrs. Taylor for, um, the process of, of, um, publishing a legal ad in the Daily News twice, um, uh, as well as, um, notifications to the, uh, to the abutters in, in mailings. And then, uh, and then there was an additional, a second letter, uh, sent out, uh, to the abutters also, um, kind of just stating our position in, in the, and, and opening up the, uh, to, um, discussion if there was, if there was any interest in that. So, so maybe not a robust public outreach plan, I wouldn't say that we pre-hensurets and all those things, which are, are very valuable public outreach is, is, is a really valuable piece, and I don't mean to, uh, uh, under, understate its, its importance. But certainly as per the, um, uh, review criteria, uh, we, we feel that we had, um, um, followed the, the requirements that are listed in the, um, in the bylaws. Letters from Christiansen, sir, being incorporated, were responded to by water zone. So this is in the required documents. So, um, there was discussion about an email that was sent, um, by Mr., um, by, by CSI, that, that raised new items, uh, and, um, there, every item in that letter had been sent in a, in a letter prior to, or had been, had been included in the, in the correspondence with DEP. And, um, and those were part of the two, the, the, the back and forth reviews. Those are all in appendix O of your, um, your special permit review criteria. There are their last three or four entries in there, there was the letters from, um, Mrs. Peters, uh, Mr. Christiansen, my response, and then response letters, and then my response, and then response letters, and then the, the, um, and then the DEP, letter, which, which then enumerated the items within that as well. So the DEP lists very carefully, you know, that you can tell they're, they're concerned about the legal issue, of course, as, as would anybody, that they go through and enumerate every item in there. So, um, and in, in those letters, um, there's this reference to a, a technical conflict. And, uh, and in my opinion, it, uh, it is a, it's a minor professional disagreement, uh, and misunderstanding, uh, be, by CSI, and, um, uh, believed to be of minimal cost, consequence by myself, and, and I, and I think we can infer that DEP agrees with that by the approval of that. So, uh, in addition, um, the, uh, the, the work that was done, uh, for, um, requirement for stormwater management, this really gets to the core of the public safety and the water quality aspect. Uh, the increase in runoff from solar panels will be controlled by 39, uh, panels, uh, that are seven feet, um, uh, seven feet wide by three feet deep, uh, they're just infiltration trenches, um, and some of them as long as, as 75 feet. And, uh, what they, they're, they're basically, they kind of ruin, um, the out, the outer perimeter for the most part of the, um, of the facility, of the proposed facility. And this is an example of, um, of one, on, on the southeast corner, panels would be here, this is our, um, uh, and then, and then we would be in here, um, uh, basically, this is along an equal elevation contour, so everything's about the same. All, all the water will run to that. And, um, they're, actually, this is not one, this is one, two, and the beginning of a third. And there's not a whole lot to them, um, we just, you know, they're, they're, um, here, this is an example, shows 100-foot contour and 101-foot contour. They, you know, they would be, uh, three feet wide, sorry, seven feet wide. And then we have, um, you know, essentially just a box of rocks, not, not a whole lot to it. But what they do is, um, uh, um, they provide for storage for that very large 100-year storm. And this is just a little bit of a professional opinion, but I think that, I would, I would assume that DEP will probably lessen this requirement over time because it's pretty excessive, I think. You know, if you think, if you go out to the, to the current Middle Road site and you see no, um, substantial, um, uh, concentrated flow or erosion occurring on a site without stormwater management, simply because it has good vegetative cover, then a, um, a modest amount of, of stormwater management. Because what they do is they make us treat this as the entire area as, as impervious. And what they had done previously is because the area up below it was impervious, they said, there was no imperviousness. So that obviously was too far in the other direction. But you still have an equal area of pervious grassed vegetated areas, if this is all running across, that are still serving that same benefit. So, that's neither here nor there for this project, but it is, um, it's, I think it's an important point. Okay. So another aspect, uh, about the limitations to the, um, uh, the, what would be the, the site survey, the site topography, and the modeling, there were, there were, um, some, um, shortcomings that had been pointed out previously, and we, um, that information was all revised, and we used, um, a type of imagery called LiAR through, um, MassGIS. It's very, very good information, it gives you, um, elevations to about, uh, 2.6 centimeters. So it's, it's just perfect for, for this type of analysis. And, uh, in addition, which I'll talk a little bit about later, is we used, um, uh, we, we surveyed additional information at the road crossing. And, uh, this is an example of, of how this, um, uh, the, um, uh, the refined watershed analysis was done. So this is, uh, this doesn't show the, the full extent of the watersheds, but this shows the ponding areas, um, uh, of, uh, that were, that were modeled, um, uh, for the various storms. But you can see that, um, from, from the facility, um, it's going to run in this direction, uh, and then out here, uh, and then similarly in this direction and out here. I believe there's a crossing here and a crossing here, and then a crossing out there. These are basically one of these, uh, what they, what they call them, uh, uh, ground river valleys. This is the coastal area that we're, we're in, where there's all these old remnant rivers, and that, that may have been the case here. So, uh, item 7, um, this is a really important one, um, and I want to be sure that, uh, everybody understands that. So the, the, the wild ta, wildlife habitat assessment that was done in 2015, um, uh, identified a lot of, a lot of issues. They did, they did a very good job, and, you know, they characterized what's out there, the value of it, um, and, and the, the impacts. And, uh, a lot of them, as I say, we, we concede the fact that there is, there's, there's simply no avoiding some of those impacts. This is not no-impact development, this is low-impact development. No impact is conservation land, and, and, but they did list, um, um, eight items, uh, for recommended best management practices, and all eight items have, have been adopted here. So the eight items are minimize tree, cutting clarity beyond that necessary to install, uh, panels and maintain in no shade zone. Keep the site grassed and use little or no gravel. There's, with the exception of, of the, of the roads which have all been there, or there is, uh, there's, there's going to be, uh, very little gravel out there, except for the, the, the couple of parking areas, small parking areas. The drip line height from the panels, uh, uh, at 10 feet, um, the panel slopes are as low as possible to minimize rainfall runoff from erosive force. That's the part I keep referring to for the Middle Road piece, um, and the, the erosive force there. Construct and install panels in manageable sections to minimize the extent of open ground at any one time to minimize stormwater runoff during construction. So this is a really important point. So, um, on, on a big complicated project, it can take a year, two years, whatever, to, to fully phase a project in. Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the, the panels go in, in a period of like four weeks. Am I right?
It'd probably be about four weeks, yeah.
So, because. So they're, they're not, they're not pouring footings, they, they put these giant screw augers in the ground, um, and so there's no, the, uh, the ground's not getting torn up. I mean, the ground is going to be, um, will be leveled in some areas, um, will be regraded in some areas. But the, um, um, but there's these giant screw augers, so, so the panels go up, uh, fairly quickly, four weeks for construction time. You can't build anything in four weeks, you can't build a house, maybe, um, maybe build a deck in four weeks. Um, and then beyond that, it's the, it's the fences and the electrical. And, um, so really the, the long, um, the, the, the period of time that there will be disturbance that is open, uh, will be, will be really minimized such that then the site, um, can be sprayed and replanted and all of that stuff, um, and, and to make full use of the growing season.
I have a question, Marsha, was this the fellow who we hired?
Yeah, I think that's, that's.
That's the wildlife habitat?
Yeah. Yeah, that's right.
He also had one that said, try to plant as much wildflowers.
I'll go back and find that, yeah, that's good.
You know?
Absolutely, yeah. Certainly, uh, native species are an important part of it.
Yeah. It's in there someplace.
Yeah. Now, I, I don't know if that would happen underneath the, uh, the panels, but maybe, I don't know.
Uh, typically, we would plant that outside the fence, and then inside the fence as well.
I'm not sure where he meant, uh, uh, because I don't remember, I'd have to dig up the report and I haven't looked at it in a while.
Well, we could typically, we'll put wildflowers on the outside of the fence, but inside the fence, if they, they can typically grow higher and roll and shade the panels, so we wouldn't want that inside.
I think there are some in there already, though, if I were, if I were to guess, the, uh, what's it, it's like a lace, queen man's lace or something like that was in there. I felt there were some things in there. Yeah.
Inside the fence.
Inside.
Over in there. In the mix, yeah.
In the mix, yeah.
Low growing, yeah.
Keep the access road and width as narrow as possible, and stormwater runoff should be captured and infiltrated. And, and, and all, all eight of those items have been fully incorporated into the, into the redesign here. And, and in some of these instances, you'll see that, um, I list both, um, pending your approval, and they're all pending your approval, but, um, you know, um, things that, uh, maybe are, are covered by both, but I, I would suggest that, that, um, certainly this is, uh, under your piece, but the, um, uh, DEP also included the wildlife habitat impacts as part of their evaluation. Criteria 7, all setback and no disturb buffer requirements have been adhered to. Location of the infiltration systems has been revised to meet the required 50-foot setback. No disturbance is proposed within the 25-foot no disturb buffer, um, 50-foot no build wetland buffer, and 100-foot separation from most vernal pools. The disturbance of, uh, of small animals, amphibians, and reptiles will be temporary, as the site will be revegetated with na, with native grasses, and fencing is raised six inches to allow for passage. And, uh, the stream crossing fully spans the width of the Bankful Channel, and I want to, want to go into that, uh, actually, that's a little bit further down, but, um, we'll go back to the stream crossing piece because that's a, a significant piece also. So the project has been redesigned to limit impacts on natural resources and surrounding properties. We've talked a lot about this, um, so I won't reiterate too much of this stuff, but other than to say that, there, there's a couple of, of other pieces. These are some of the recommendations that, uh, come out of the best management practices, uh, from the, the Vernal Pool Guidance. It's limit the development to less than 25% of the upland habitat. If you remember, we're talking about 18%, if you're just including the residential area, and 13% if you're looking at the whole parcel. Excluding roads and driveways from the vernal pool envelope, that's done. Establish directional corridors consisting of button fragmented forest with at least a partly closed canopy of overstory, uh, greater than 50% covered. We've got all of this. Minimize impedance to amphibian terrestrial passage, that's done as well. There's not one item on there that hasn't been addressed, yes.
I have a question, what's unfragmented forest?
Yeah, um, so one of the, one of the real problems that we have in, in our current regulatory framework for wetlands and vernal pools is, is, uh, we, um, because we have no ability to regulate the uplands, um, we basically, um, isolate them almost like islands. So, uh, they're, they refer to it as island biodiversity, right? So with a problem that ends up happening is a species needs to go from here into the upland. uplands, and then over the next one to mix, right? They need that biodiversity. So if you have an acre of land with a nice little wetland, and you build all around it, and it's isolated, it's fragmented. So this idea of connected corridors or habitat corridors, et cetera, is a really big piece. And that's, I'm glad you asked the question, because the fact that we have what is referred to as directional buffers, which basically means that, yes, you have disturbance, but it opens into an area that goes for a very, very long area. So yeah, there's no question there's impact in that 12 acres, but you can go for thousands of feet in some places within that contiguous wetland system. And so it can still function as an ecosystem. Review criteria nine, land clearing, soil erosion and habitat impacts. The applicant and any co-applicant may be required to replace up 100% of any and all trees six inches or greater. So we're referring to a couple of the other responses for the soil erosion habitat. But we're pointing out that MAS, the EP, EPA, and others endorse low-impact development as being a form of sensible development to minimize the impact. We've prepared an estimate for a tree mitigation fund payment or otherwise using costing that was done for the Middle Road project. And then lastly, I wanted to quote something out of that wildlife habitat assessment that is, it says, what is it? It's not all rosy, but it's good, though. But it says, "There would remain extensive and similar habitat in the larger block that surrounds the site, and to a limited degree, this remaining habitat would offer benefit to displaced wildlife." So that's not, that's definitely a half-empty, half-full piece to it, but what, me pointing that out is the, is that, yes, there's impact, but there's certainly, it's not destruction of the habitat, I guess is what I'm trying to say. So site screening, we've talked a lot about this. Site will be screened, this was the thing that I choked on in December, and I could not find that this is what it refers to. Screening will occur to the extent reasonable and practical, considering the characteristics of the individual site. Obviously, that's up to you folks to decide, but would suggest that, you know, there are other examples of solar facilities in residential areas, and we'll go through that economic impact analysis. So the screening, I think we've talked about, and then the visual separation. So this is the concern that was raised last time, of the separation from I-95, and whether or not the solar facility would be visible from the freeway. We have 455 feet of minimum distance of densely forested area over there. So we're confident that, we hope that you would think that that is sufficient there for screening from the freeway. Special review criteria 11, the proposed use and development will not have a substantial or undue adverse effect upon adjacent property or the character of the area. So we've talked about some of this, but I want to show you something here about an economic impact analysis. So we did an analysis of five facilities in Wenham, Shirley, Ayers, Gilbertsville, and Lester. And before I show you this, you can have to suppress your laughter on this one, or maybe you're disgusted, I don't know. But this is, this is the analysis here. I show this to my kids, and this is ridiculous, but...
I had the same reaction when I...
This is a little ridiculous. But, so we're trying to make sense of a lot of data, right? So what you see here, this is an economic impact analysis of, there's basically three things that we evaluate. There is, there's before and after, and then there are properties in the vicinity of, I think it's 300 meters, which is basically the average distance for Courtney Drive. And then we went around and did the same assessment for these five locations, properties that were within that 300-meter buffer, and the properties that were outside of that buffer. And then same comparison was made by zip code for that area. So what we're trying to do is isolate variable effects that would be regional or local from effects that would be solar. And do you want me to talk about this, or should I just go to the bullet points? I'd love to talk about it, if you're okay with it, but I can just do the bullet points if you'd rather.
I think it's kind of important, because it addresses the whole issue of property values, and since I don't understand it, I think that an explanation would be good.
Thank you. I spent a lot of time on this. Okay, so first part to understand is they're grouped by colors. Colors is by location. So everything that is orange is in, is Wenham. So this is the Beverly, Mas, Beverly Airport near, it's right near that. So, and then, so before you pay attention to any of the details, just look at the big picture. So group by color, and then the solid line is the zip code trend, okay? So that is, that's the...
Property values.
Of property values, yeah. And then you have to look at symbol type. Okay, so symbol type is important also. So round is the estimated value, right? I didn't estimate it, this was off of Zillow, right? They have 10-year property records, and so they have, and diamonds are actual sale values. And we pick these within three years of the install date, okay? And then you have, I think I covered all that stuff. Oh yeah, and then red diamonds indicate an increase in sale value since sale. And then for each area, there is a dotted line and a double-headed arrow that indicates the point, the time of installation and the pre and post. So let's just look at it from a 10,000-foot view initially. Oh, sorry, one other thing. The Xs represent properties that are outside of that 300-meter buffer, within that same zip code, or very close to the solar facility. And that wasn't done for all the properties, it was done for Wenham. I think it was done for three or four properties, and four properties in Wenham. Okay, so now, first thing to notice is that most of these follow pretty consistent trends. Sometimes there's a lab, this was the most expensive house, you know, but one of the things, so one of the things I want to point out here, so let's look at Wenham, and we'll look at the circles here. And what we see here is that installs here, we have a period, and then shortly afterwards, the sale value is higher, okay? And cycling down, and cycling back up. Actually, I think I might have my, yes. No, here. No. Which one am I on? This one. Yes, so it's this one right here. Okay, but so the increase in the sale value here. So we have an increase here. We have, here's one which shows a decrease in sale value after the install. But it's not enough to look at just that immediate window, you have to look at a cycle, right? So if you look at this cycle, this is clearly part of a trend that has occurred, that's been occurring for years, right? So this down, this downtrend here is, you know, a three or four-year trend here in this instance. And the same thing, so now let's jump to Shirley. Shirley is in yellow. So Shirley, we have our, here's our zip code trend, here's our pre, and surely this particular one goes down afterwards, and then is, and then is higher in these instances here. So we have two sales that are higher post than they were pre, and similarly for the whole, for this property in Ayers. Is that right, for his? Ayers, yeah. So we have another one higher in Ayers, and this one here, similarly in Gilbertsville. So is this definitive? No, but I think what it shows is that what we would hope not to see is installation and a clear decrease, right? And that's not the case, and what I want to point out here, that I tried to be a little more clear in terms of how this went. So there were, of local reference properties examined outside of 300 meters, three of four had higher sale values post-install. Of adjacent properties examined within the 300 meters, had four of seven had higher values. But of those remaining three, two of those three have lower sale values that were part of a larger trend, a trend that started years before. Of adjacent properties examined with sales post-install, the single property that had a lower sale value was part of a larger multi-year cyclical trend spanning 10 years, and we could go on. But the main point is that there is just, it's not conclusive that it's really going anywhere. And for a person who works with a lot of data, can tell you that the statistical significance of this is zero. For this type of data that's really noisy, you would need hundreds or thousands of entries to really assess this. So I don't want to suggest that we know this definitively or anything, but we can, our minds can observe trends that we often can't pick out statistically. So there you go, there's that. So the next piece that we did was to assess the economic benefit of open space. So there was a clearly positive valuation benefit for residential properties from nearby open space, in contrast with the negative impacts of commercial and other residential developments. So that is to say, if this land is put into conservation, permanent conservation, the abiding properties have added value. If that, if this area is developed, it has a decrease in relation to that. And the literature's very clear on this. There were a lot of studies that were looked at here. The degree of influence is site-specific, who knows? It has a lot to do with the local character. The property value benefit from converting adjacent acreage from pasture land to conservation land had a marginal value of 1.87%. The property value of converting acreage from pasture land to residential land had a decrease of 0.9%. And converting it to industrial land had a decrease of 2.6%. So one might reasonably say, well, this is industrial, right? And, but because it's solar. But I think what we tried to establish earlier was that this is, the negative impacts of a solar facility don't seem to be observable. So if there is a negative impact, you would expect that the positive benefit of the surrounding conservation land would offset that. And in that, you have actually a memo in there, which I didn't do it for this today, just to try and save time, but there's a little, we worked through two examples, using their numbers of how you would factor in the actual acreage of conservation land, the acreage of developed property, and what the resulting values would be, using a couple of different numbers.
Can I just...
Please, yes.
Back up a little bit.
Yeah, I know.
I'm just kind of catching up with the economic analysis. And, well, there was nothing that went off the cliff after installation, you know, installation. Was there, within the 300 meters, was the installation visible from those residences?
Yes, some of them there were, for sure. So the five installations that I showed, or, one was repeated, but there were five that we studied, I believe two or three of those would be visible by the neighbors. That's right. Yeah, so where screening was not part of it.
Okay. Thank you. Which goes into the next thing. So the relationship, I would think, of the value of open space kind of depends on the character of the community.
100%.
And obviously, if I'm in an urban situation, open space is going to have a lot higher value on my property than if I'm in a more rural situation where we kind of take it for granted.
Yeah, 100%. That's right.
All right. Just to give you a break there.
Yeah, and you'll actually see in that economic analysis, there's a table that we provided that shows there's a big range. The take-home message is that it's always a positive benefit, the degree to which is dependent on the local character. So the next one is the proposed use and development will not result in the destruction, loss, or damage of any natural scenic or historical feature of significant importance. There are no known natural scenic or historical features of significant importance in the locations of the proposed solar array. Martin Burns Conservation Area is to the north. A buffer zone of 120 to 250 feet will remain between the project fence and the common property aligned with the conservation area. A review of the current Massachusetts Natural Heritage Atlas and the Endangered Species Program indicates that none of the properties located within the estimated habitat of rare wildlife and the priority habitat of rare species. And that there are no certified vernal pools under the jurisdiction of the Wetland Protection Act, but it didn't really matter, and we treated them as if they were.
Okay.
Okay. 14A, I'm sorry, I know it's getting really late, 8:30. The entire project site shall be screened at all seasons of the year from the view. It should be in character with the generally prevailing neighborhood. We've talked about this, obviously, a bit, suggests that it won't be visible and that the applicant is committed to ensuring that. Criteria 15, the volume of cut and fill, the number of trees that are six inches or more in caliper. The area of wetland vegetation displaced or erosion in front of air water pollution shall be held to a minimum. After consultation with the Conservation Commission, certainly that was done. The Conservation Commission approved, and then, and adjustments were made based on the recommendations at the time, and we feel that that is also something that the DEP has weighed in on as well. Adequate provisions have been provided for stormwater management. I think we've talked a lot about this. Again, this really, we feel has been covered. Would you like me to elaborate?
No, I don't think that's necessary.
Unreasonable departure from the character of materials and scale of buildings in the vicinity is viewed from public ways, and places have been minimized. So the project will not be viewable from public ways and places. And so that, really, that speaks to minimization. We have a 435-foot buffer with Courtney Drive, a 455-foot buffer, a 995, and a 440-foot-long vegetated screen that will be installed. Oh, yeah, and then, you know, just unreasonable departure from the character of materials and scale of buildings, I include this last point, just, you know, solar is encouraged in the state of Mas, and, you know, in a proper, or in a proper situation, you think it can be done in a way that it's not an unreasonable departure. And an example of that would be that, there really are, there are lots of examples of solar installations in the proximity of residential, and I would say that, from the ones that I've seen, most of them would probably... And I would say that from the ones that I've seen, most of them would probably much rather this install than they have. Review criteria 18, the proposed development of the site shall be in compliance with the provisions of Newbury's zoning bylaw, including parking signs, landscaping, environmental standards, and other permit sections. We feel we've covered all of those items. And if there's any that we've missed, please bring those to our attention. The, the, the environmental standards certainly have been covered by, by DEP. The parking signs and landscaping, less so, but the landscaping, yeah, I guess I won't talk too much more about that. Requires an operation and maintenance plan. This was, this was part of the December 2016 submittal, and it's a very detailed plan. It includes checklist and annual reporting forms. So there's a reporting form in there that at the end of the year, those checklists that, that have, that somebody's gone through, you know, and done their job, that, that annual report is, is signed by, by the owner and submitted to, to the town as an insurance of, of compliance with that. Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
The operation and, operation and maintenance plan that was submitted, was that just for the stormwater system or?
No, it's the whole site.
It's for the whole site? Because what was listed in the application was an O&M plan for a different site.
For a different site?
So it was.
No.
Appendix I sample operations and maintenance agreement?
Appendix I is.
I think that was the only one that we submitted and not the one that went to the EBITDA.
No, no, that, what that is, that is the, appendix I is, this is, it's a sample contract.
Right.
It's a sample contract.
So it's not, it's not specific to Newbury.
Yeah, yeah, that's a sample O&M maintenance agreement. But the, what they would be held to is, is in appendix A. So any maintenance agreement would, would rep, would just reference appendix A to operation and maintenance plan.
So was that one prepared specifically for Newbury?
Absolutely.
So, is that?
Appendix A, so that would be, oh, about halfway.
I don't have tabs.
Yeah. Here, use that, it's easier for now.
Yeah. Obviously, yeah, my copy doesn't have, it just has page, operation and maintenance plan and then.
You know what that is?
No plan.
I know, I, sorry. My mistake. That is because the, it was submitted as appendix C of the stormwater management report, which is also part of your piece, appendix. Yes, so my apologies again. So that is appendix, which one is that? That is appendix C of the. So right after all the hydrologic calculations. There you go. Well, you're, yeah, so.
Weapons protection and construction.
It's actually just appendix C of the O&M plan. Sorry. There it is. And so, yeah, just be gone. Those were the, be gone. Those are the appendix A. There, that's it, okay. Sorry about the confusion.
When was that prepared, Steve?
That was revised 12/30/2017.
Okay.
And that was the, that was submitted as, that, that's a requirement of DEP. You have to have an O&M plan as part of that. So that was, that was part of that, part of that submission. All right, so this next part is, if, if it's possible, we could just skip through this stuff, but I'll, maybe what I'll do is just read the first, first entry item. So what, what this is, is these are essentially the items. There were a number of pieces that were listed in, this is, correct those list of concerns that were specifically addressed in the DEP letter in their superseding order of conditions. So what, what, what these are, these are excerpts from the DEP letter of, of superseding order of conditions. So this is just basically verbatim right out of there. And they, they went through and just itemized all, all their responses. So this is, this is their responses. This is, and the reason this is in here, it's this is in response to the questions about some of the, the technical pieces that have supposedly haven't been addressed. But they're all here and I don't know if we necessarily want to go into these.
Well, I think you want to make sure that the community has these so that they can see what, what they, what they responded to. Is that okay with you, Alicia, that, you know, that rather than going through the litany? So just make sure that you give that to them and they can see.
Okay.
What they got, okay?
Sure. Yeah, so, so what this is, is it just goes through and lists the various elements that have been corrected from, you know, basically these are a line-by-line issue of things that have been addressed through the RFI number two. And so that is the stormwater management, it's first item. Second one was relating to the subwatersheds and the topography. Next one was, the runoff curve number had been updated. Routing method, methods were corrected. Testing information was submitted. The location of infiltration systems has been revised. Accessways for maintenance of stormwater VMPs have been added to the plan. Emergency supplyways have been added to the infiltration VMPs. LiDAR and field survey reviews to improve the accuracy of the model we are overflow. Errors in specifics of the output geometry have been corrected. Approximations of key elevations in the previous model have been refined. Details of the infiltration system were submitted that were not in the previous design and have been included. The O&M plan has been revised. The correct rawls rate, that's, that's, that's the point that we, one of the points of discrepancy with the review by Christensen is what is the proper infiltration rate to be using? And there's actually three that you can use. And we use the method, it's not even actually a rawls rate, but we use a, the rawls rate is a standard number you take out of the table. We used 50% of the average value of what was measured in the field, which is another acceptable approach if you're using the dynamic sizing approach. Testing for saturated hydraulic conductivity has been performed at each location when infiltration structures are proposed. Five test pits and infiltration tests, confirming materials and the rates. We'll show you that. So what I wanted to show you, this has been, this, this was really, I think, the, the last big item on Christensen's list. So what we did is, what's typical is people just use the NRCS, the Natural Resource Conservation Service Soil Layer. They have other soil layers, but they're, they're estimates. And then, so this is, this is just a refined analysis. And what, so the, what the type of analysis was done is we take the soil types that are in the NRCS study and then we go confirm where in the field they exist. And, and then it's called landform mapping. So basically, it's, it's, it's pretty simple in this case, which is nice. Woodbridge is everything that's flat and Canton is everything that's on a slope. So Canton is anything that's eight to 15% slope and Woodbridge is everything that's, that's low slope. So you can see the Canton is in the dark here and then the Woodbridge is all the flats. The test pits show, the circles show where the test pits are. And one of the concerns that Christensen had was the depth of the test pits was, he was concerned that they were insufficient. And, and I think what he's confusing here is that two of the test pits only go to, they, they went to refusal until we started hitting rocks. And it wasn't bedrock, but it just by, by soil logger, we couldn't go any further. But all, but what that did is it confirmed where we weren't going to do infiltration. Okay? So we don't do infiltration on eight to 15% slopes. All the infiltration is done on the flats. So all the red locations are the ones that apply and those are the ones that were the point of discussion heavily with DEP that they, that they agree with us on. Okay. So item 21, a reduction of tree clearing to the extent practical was requested by DEP. And this is a part where I know it's certainly in your jurisdiction, the tree clearing part of the piece, but it certainly was absolutely in, in DEP's piece as well. They were, they were considering it because their, their, their concern from the Weapon Protection Act, from the standpoint of protecting weapons and vernal pools, et cetera. So a lack of information regarding the specifics of the roadway crossing at the intermittent stream was noted in both. So the survey, channel and road survey was, was updated and the wetland crossing was redesigned. So here's the survey, we went out and did a very detailed survey of the area. And here's the design. And one of the things I want to point out is I personally think this is very excessive. This, this is, this is really expensive and, and it could be done by, by, by doing nothing, by just continuing to drive over it like it is currently. This is, this is a, shows a really significant effort. So the way you read this is look at the cross-section here. So this line here is our, is our existing road, right? And we have two little culverts that are there. We're not touching a thing. This is, it's already, you know, because it's a, just a cart path, this is just how we, how they were built back in the yester year. No disrespect to the family. But back, back in the day, we didn't worry about stream crossing. But now essentially what's, what's going to be done is just an abutment and a, and a bed bridge. And the bridge, what it gets is it enables you to span, here's your edge of wetland from here, sorry, I'm going to smudge your, from here to here's your edge of wetland. So what you see here is this is your temporary impact. And we have a little, little bit of wetland impact. Here we have eight square feet, here we have nine square feet. All in all, there's, there's only 20 square foot, square feet of wetland impacts in that area that is part of the review process.
So Steve, this came from Borrego?
This part came from Borrego.
And you did it because DEP wanted you to do it?
Nope, that wasn't our question, it was when we were going through Conservation Commission.
Oh, COMCOM.
Yeah, that's where it came from and we didn't want to impact the wetlands or.
Did they want, did they require it?
No, they didn't. It was something that we proposed so that we weren't impacting that existing stream so that we weren't going to cause any flooding. We're going, going to be well above so that the natural, it does back up there because of those pipes, so we're not impacting that at all.
And this is located at that stream that we all know when we're walking in, you go?
That's right.
What is the length of the bridge?
That's a good question. Could be 100 years.
No, the length.
Over length, over light.
Oh, length.
I don't remember what it is.
You said light.
Okay. 40 feet.
Yeah.
40 feet.
Yeah, 40 feet from, yeah, 40 feet.
Okay. I think we need to.
Yes.
Get to a point where we can get some questions from the board and then get the community's input.
Absolutely. Inadequate consideration regarding the proximity of work to vernal pool habitat. There are potential vernal pools in the vicinity of the project in the northeast quadrant of the site. No disturbance is proposed within 25 feet and no structure will be located. Visions in the extent of tree clearing has been, has reduced disturbance and a tree clearing plan has been developed. So the, again, that's, that's, that's right out of the superseding order of conditions. In addition, the operation and maintenance plan includes VMPs for the protection of vernal pools, wetlands, and upland habitat. We're going all that, we've talked about that. No disturbance is proposed within the 25-foot, no disturb. And economic impact analysis and more economic impact analysis. We want to have.
So, so Martha, can you get copies to Alicia?
Yeah, I have a couple of extra copies.
Yes.
Just to get, and then you can make them for your.
Would it be possible to electronicize?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Now, have you concluded and can we just ask?
Yeah, so we're all set. Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry, thank you for your time. Sorry about the.
It's appreciated because it's a number of questions raised and you didn't have them answered. Board members have any further questions or observations they'd like to make?
I have a question. It's not an environmental question at all, but as a result of studying this spreadsheet, I carefully read 97-1 and 97-3. Carefully read them. And they suggest that a project such as this should provide some benefit to the community. One to, in 97-1, to preserve and increase amenities. In 97-3, the best interest of the town and so on. Have we done any assessment of what the benefit to the town is for this project? Would it be, would it be, I assume there'd be increased tax revenue?
We, we have made no analysis of that.
Is that a fair question to ask?
Sure. What, what were you reading from them?
The first two, 97-1 and 97-3.
First two of.
The bylaws.
Of the bylaws? Yeah, it's a healthy question to ask. One, one might say that the conservation land would be a public benefit.
Yeah.
But I have to ask, KB, I don't, we never, we've not had a follow-up discussion since our initial discussions of two years ago. And I think a key element to the value of that to the town is whether or not there's public access to the land.
It's private property.
That's going to be a problem.
Why?
Because.
We leave why?
Well, because I think that we're looking for public benefit.
Yeah, I don't think you can ascribe a benefit to it if it's not.
It's not a benefit then. I'm just saying, I'm just saying there's, there's loads of private property around town that the public has access to.
I think an issue of concern then is would the Conservation Commission or Division of Fishery and Wildlife actually accept a conservation restriction over the property if there is no access? So that's something that would certainly need to be addressed. Because if, if we don't have an entity to hold the conservation restriction, then it can't be.
This is something that I want my attorney to work on.
We, we had mentioned it before. It's not.
We had mentioned it before. I think we discussed it before that. The purpose and the intent of this property is to preserve, this has been in the family since the first house. My grandmother wants to preserve the property as much as she can. She does not want to see buildings and she wants to keep them within the family. That was the goal, that's the intent.
I think, I think it can be accomplished because there's loads of these.
What she doesn't want, what she's concerned about, today it is posted private property and we continue to still have poachers and hunters that come on, even as private property. So there's, there. I think, I think just to be fair, the goal was, again, to maintain the property within the family. It's the last remaining piece of our property, other than a five-acre piece across the street, was to keep it as much as we could without buildings and structures outside of farm use. And we thought this was appropriate use. Because there is a heavy, this is not in 61A, there's a heavy tax burden that has placed on my grandmother. She's 86 years old. And at some point, this needs to be transferred down and continue to be used throughout the family. So I think we're trying to find that, the goal was to try to find the benefit of satisfying my grandmother's needs and we thought this was a way to do that. So again, I think it's important to have my attorney work with you.
I would say. I would say soon.
We can do it.
And contact Paul. And then if you need to, you know, contact me or Martha. But based on just your initial conversation, we can get involved. We've talked about it, so I think we know where we want to be, so, okay?
Yeah, I'm not necessarily arguing for public access, but access. But I do think it's relevant to know what's the benefit to the town.
Right.
And right now, I don't have any feel for that whatsoever.
Right, I mean, that's the problem we're having right now with the whole issue of Caldwell Farm. I mean, we've got something that should be public access. And it's an issue for us. And it's a conservation easement that we hold. And the public has a right to go there, but the community has been fighting. I mean, just so you know, I mean, it's a big issue. And we're not going to budge on it.
Yeah, one thing we did do though was we put it into conservation restriction as our choice. Not because, not because, we spoke to DEP and said, we would be willing to do this. Our goal is to preserve that property and not.
But DEP does have it as a requirement.
Because.
As a condition.
I understand that, but it's because.
Because they volunteered it.
We volunteered it, we were not forced to. This is, you could, DEP.
I get that.
Nothing forced us to make those determinations. We did that because we wanted.
But again, my concern remains.
Not because we thought we were going to be pressured into using this as public access. I think that's very important to, based on the decision. That I shouldn't, I have to answer the bylaws, meet the bylaws. And I don't think it's fair that I feel as though right now that I'm being asked to do something. If I don't do that, then that has, that takes issue with the fact that have I met those bylaws? I think that's important and I think that's fair. Because I think I'm, from our perspective, and I, and is, we're trying to meet the bylaws and try to be respectful to exactly what they, what they say and how they are defined. But in there, it doesn't say that I have to give them to.
Part of your presentation with regard to economic impact discusses the fact that a large portion of the property will be maintained as open space in perpetuity through the conservation.
And we're happy to have that conversation.
And my concern, and also it was part of your decision from DEP. So my concern is, can it be in a conservation restriction if there is not an entity willing to accept that restriction and to hold that restriction if there's no public access? So that's something that we will need to figure out.
I think we could say that there's no question that there are entities that will hold private parcels in conservation. There are land trusts all over the place that, and not all of which offer public access. We'd be happy to provide a list of, from some local land trusts, land trusts of properties that don't provide public access. The land trust near me, Southeast Land Trust, has dozens of properties. And there's plenty that don't provide that access. Parcel near me, that was a big point of discussion for some time. And then they came to some agreement. There's a short period of time where they're allowed when other farming activities are going on for limited areas.
So as a takeaway, let's just have you, do you want my attorney to reach out to you?
Sure, absolutely.
That's the way to do it, okay? And we'll hopefully report on it next week and see what discussion has been held, okay? All right. How about you guys? Now that Jim has upset the conference very much. But also on taxes, we don't have a tax agreement yet.
There will be one.
I know, but we haven't.
So that is a benefit and there will definitely be.
I think it's a payment of the law, right?
Paid the taxes.
It's a pilot.
So would that be something that we should prepare for consideration now?
Yeah, I think it's the last time you negotiated that with Tracy.
Yep.
And we do the same thing.
Yep. So I think having that discussion makes sense.
Okay, so we have, so we have the specifics of the conservation easement. We have sort of the benefits of the property as it relates to tax. Taxes are paying the loo. Is there, is there anything else from a sort of a public benefit piece that comes to mind? Sort of what we were trying to accomplish with the open space value and the, some of these other things. Are you, I understand that it's, it's not a direct economic value like a payment of loo or something like that. But is there, is there something else that we come to mind that would help demonstrate that?
Well, the other thing that you've got, and which is I don't think it's so much a public benefit yet, but is that you have an offer somewhere of X amount of dollars for trees to represent some kind of a offset to the sixteen hundred trees that are being torn down. So that is a potential benefit depending on the amount of money you want to give us.
Sure.
Right.
But, I mean, I hadn't thought of it, so I'm glad you did bring it up, Jim. So I think that we should.
Yeah, the first, ninety-seven one and ninety-seven three.
Spend some time thinking about the public benefits.
Really spell that out, that's it.
So we did submit something, Martha, I think she has it on.
That's what she just said.
Yeah, and it's very similar to what we did for the other project. So it's something for you to review and take.
Right. Anything else come to mind for you guys down here? Martha, anything? Alicia and Courtney Road group, would you like to say something?
Do you want me to go first? I just have one question on the economic impact.
Sure. And even though we were doing this back and forth, if you could just give us your name and see if you can face that camera.
My name is Regina, Fortsia, on Courtney Drive. I just wanted to know if any, when you consider these values, like why you chose Zillow?
Yeah.
Didn't know that that was a reliable source. Like, we didn't really find out when we were shopping.
Zillow.
Perhaps, yeah. I think it's noted for not being reliable in terms of home values. But were any, like, construction projects or permits, like, evaluated? Like, this property here in Wenham, that undergo construction? And could that be the reason for this rise? And I just want to know if you're stuck.
Sure, sure. So the reason for Zillow is simply that it's a publicly available data source that basically harvests the multiple listing server, multiple listing service, and the publicly available tax records. I agree that the Z estimate values are mainly not be necessarily all that reliable. But I actually think that it's probably less important than the overall trend in relation to one another. And that's actually why we weren't trying to hide that information. The circles in there are all just estimates versus the diamonds, which are actual sale values. So that part, that part is something that is, that you have some confidence on. As far as individual details as it relates to specific properties, no. I don't know anything about them, other than we tried to pick pieces that were relatively close and in roughly the same price range, same number beds and that sort of stuff. So they were all in the high three hundreds to, I think, maybe mid four hundreds, depending on the places. And then in the case of Wenham, that one, big one was, just, there were four properties that had had sales or that had some records on them that were fairly close. So we want to include that, even though it's the highest of the bunch, so.
Okay, so there are no data points excluded from the.
No, well, data points excluded, there was a lot of data that wasn't included.
Right.
Simply because, you know, you have, there's no, you can't really download the data. You have to go and sort of harvest it out. And it was just trying to get what we felt was enough information that you could establish some trends. I think probably the most reliable piece on there would be the zip code numbers, right? Because those actually should be a piece that represents a large number of data as an average.
Okay, so question one, whether you selected or deselected certain properties for your analysis?
No.
So can I take it back on that for a second? So did I hear you correctly that you picked and chose which properties you were going to add into that? And you didn't capture all the data points? You just captured a handful of data points instead?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. So there were, because you can't, because to capture all the data points is, assumes that all the data points can be captured, right? So if, I've got a limit. If I'm trying to select properties within three hundred meters of a solar facility, that may be twenty properties. But then I'm limiting myself to the properties that actually have sales within those. If there's twenty properties within that three hundred meters, but only four of them have had sales, then I take all four. But I'm not taking the other whatevers because there were no sales. There's no point in comparing it, right? Because it's just an estimate. I mean, the only trends I spoke of were sale values, which are real numbers.
So you didn't take, you didn't take listings from the sold listings, which is poverty MLS. You can get your sold.
Yeah, they were sold listings.
Okay, so now I'm a little bit confused. And I want to make sure I understand you clearly, and I think it's important that the board understands this too. You chose data points, sold listings. You only, you didn't pick them all from that, from that zip code. You only chose the ones that you wanted to present in your.
No, no, because what, the way, no, not.
Is that how you understood it, Regina?
Well, I was trying to understand.
Yeah, no, I know it's really confusing and.
So let me ask you. Did you take all the sales in those three towns that occurred before or after that you had data for? Do you take the sales?
Within the three hundred.
Within the three hundred foot area?
Yes, yes.
That's what I thought you had done.
And then, and then the, and then the zip code number, I don't know how Zillow comes up with it. I'm assuming it's a combination of sales and trends and all that other stuff.
That's right. But in terms of the zeros and the X's and the things that you had up there.
That's right.
Those were all sales before and after they were built?
Within three hundred meters, yes.
And you didn't exclude anything and you did not include anything?
No.
And what was the period of time you looked at, twenty thousand seven, over ten year period?
It was a ten year period.
Looks like it's mostly two thousand and ten.
But the sales that we only looked, we were only really interested in sales within a three year window. About three years before and three years after. You know, I, because ideally, I mean, ideally you have a sale before and after. But I think there was only one property that had a sale both before and after. Most of them just have a sale before or after. So, you know, I want to just, I admit there's a lot, there's, the dataset here is not great. But it is more than you'll find in the literature. And it does show some pretty meaningful trends. But really, for this analysis to be robust, you got to get big data.
So can I just make a couple comments on this here? What you're comparing to, right? You're comparing Courtney Drive to Byfield with a property, I'm going to just take Wenham for instance.
Sure, yeah.
Okay? That's near a airport. I went by that site too. That's not, it's residences, yes, but it also abuts an airport. If you want to call that commercial, I wouldn't call that residential because there are homes there. There are no homes, people don't, you don't housing people there, you're landing planes.
Well, there's million dollar homes in the vicinity of that, in those residential neighborhoods. I mean, it's right next to a country club. It's a gorgeous area.
Well, Courtney Drive is not next to a country club either.
Yeah.
So I'm just, what I'm trying, the point I'm trying to make is.
It's not commercial and industrial like you just said.
Well, the point I'm trying to make is the airport is. And there's nothing like that around Courtney Drive. I don't see how that's an equal comparable. That's, that's.
I was rebutting, I was rebutting your position that there were no residential properties.
He didn't make that point.
Yeah, you're, you're kind of, I think you're getting off base. All he was trying to do is to show a trend.
He's not trying to compare this to the project that he was trying to do?
No, no.
Well, in some ways, yes, in some ways, no. But the larger point was, was to rebut your point, which was that there are no solar facilities in your residential areas. And this was, yes, there are solar facilities. Do they match? No, every one of them's different. But are there useful trends? Absolutely, you know, we, blood pressure, we've got a hundred different types of body types. But we know some general trends about blood pressure. Mine must be going up a little bit, so I'll slow down.
I misunderstood. I thought you were trying to compare this project to these residences and air. I mean, these properties are less than three hundred thousand dollars.
But the trend would still be the same before and after, regardless of what the value is. I mean, that's what he's trying to show is the trend.
Okay, so then the other thing I want to say about that then, a trend, if you want to look at a trend, can we look at the trend on Courtney, Courtney Drive? We had one Courtney Drive change property. We had six Courtney Drive changing us. And considering it was an upmarket, I think Martha can probably tell you guys how many people looked at one Courtney Drive and walked away from the sale of that property until, we were lucky enough to have Regina and Orion come along. I think you can also speak to how many people came and looked at the Courtney Drive, at six Courtney Drive, and left until Julian Shelley came along. You have to be mindful of this.
Well, you'd also, I don't want to, really don't want to get into too much of this because it's, we've had this discussion in the past and it proved inconclusive, in my opinion. We talked about properties all over Massachusetts. We talked about Courtney Road. The problem is, if you look at Courtney, what about the zip code of Courtney? What about all of Byfield? What have been the trends in Byfield? And then how does Courtney Drive fit into Byfield? And what kind of market is that? So we haven't done that. And I didn't intend to do that. I think, I think this is helpful, only as it says, there are examples out there where a solar installation has been installed and the property values don't go through the floor. The property values kind of go like this. And I think that's all it's saying. To read much more into it would be, I think, incorrect.
Okay.
Yes?
I have a question. I think you might have as well. In terms of the five solar properties that you looked at, how many of those were built on property that is zoned residential? And how many of those were built on properties that are zoned industrial or commercial? Because I think that affects this.
I don't have any information, yeah.
Because if you were buying a property close to a commercial property, you know what you're, you know that going in. Like, this is what we're set up for, this is what could happen. But if those were zoned residential and then put up X acres of solar panels, apples and oranges, it's not.
Well, except that you're making the assumption that this is not an appropriate land use for residential. And that's not allowed, that's not the case in Massachusetts. Solar is permissible in residential settings. And you cannot exclude it from that. And you can put requirements on there. But no, we don't have information about the zoning, nor is that the intention. Just the fact, the zoning does not make the property value. The neighborhoods, the homes, you know, the character, the zone may be part of that, but certainly not all of it.
But you know, if you're buying a home in Wenham near the airport, then that is near the airport. You know that going into it. When you buy a home in a residential area that backs up to.
Private property.
Private property.
Ninety acres of private property that has a developable option on it. Yeah, you should assume that ninety acres that's not in conservation land can go a lot of different directions, many of which are far worse than what are being proposed here.
In your opinion?
Yeah.
Well, I think the open space, the assessment of economics of open space showed that if it's residential, commercial, or industrial, your, the home values in Courtney Drive are negatively impacted. The preservation of open space positively benefits your properties.
But to refute that, isn't it currently open space?
It's not protected open space. So no, that's the difference. The, no, it's, the issue is protected open space.
The difference is that right now it's open. It's ninety-six acres owned by the Sarah family and they could develop it at any minute. It's 96 acres owned by the Sarah family, and they could develop it at any minute.
I just needed to clarify those.
But they can develop it with houses. They can't put an airport back there, unless you guys say they can. So I wanted to just kind of, I just made some comments as we went through the spreadsheet that I just created. So under number one, the purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw, he's saying that the purpose, the purpose, the project purpose is to conserve substantial natural areas to balance the low-impact development. And I'm not going to refute the fact that Katie is gracious enough to try to put this into a conservation, and that this gentleman did do what is considered a low-impact development. And I think that that speaks volumes for certain things, but at the end of the day, there still is a large amount of construction of natural resources occurring factors in this project. There are still 1,642 trees being cut, 12.6 acres are going to be cleared. If there was a residential development going into that, there would not be 1,642 trees. It wouldn't, you would make it, it would be...
Clustered.
Clustered. It would be a cluster environment. You'd have trees up there. It would not look like...
Well, now you're, you're preying on the, the good nature of the planning board to do an OSRD.
Of course. It's in the bylaw this one. So that's, I just want to make, make that clear, that there still is a large amount of destruction of natural resources. Another point of contention that I have, and I'm sure, I know I've heard Julie say it in the past too, is that they're using, they're, they're using our own properties as the buffer. So what the developer is saying is that there's 400, there's 375 feet from the nearest residential building. That is unfair. They, they should, they need to be able to say how many feet it is from the property line. These folks have a right to use their property to the property line. And if they want to develop it out that way and build a patio, they should, it needs to be screened, not from their living room and not from their house.
You're right.
And so that, that, I just don't want that to get lost. They also say that the project is located deep in the parcel. It will not be visible from local streets. North Main Street is 1,100 feet away and to the west, and 1,600 feet to the northwest. There is no mention at all in the, in this special permit application of Courtney Drive. It's completely omitted, was omitted in 2014 when it was first brought before. The wood selection is still omitted four years later. The, the purpose of the town's solar bylaws, my other thing, to address public welfare. This, this project, this wildlife habitat assessment, he says that once you punch a hole in the canopy, it's, the potential is there to, I'm going to read his exact words, are there to...
Wind throw.
Wind throw is one piece of it. But...
What, wasn't it on, wasn't it on the, what we submitted?
Okay, so, clearcutting 13.8 acres of mature upland forest, degrading the site relatively level service, and starting to so again avoid it, removing virtually all habitat value from this area, as well as diminish the quality of adjacent habitat. And that's our properties that are adjacent to this. That's the one piece of that. I don't want that to get lost. The other notes that I had, they are still, I know they've submitted what they call a landscape plan, but I have, I have not seen anything meaningful there. I would like to see, and I think my neighbors would like to see, a visual study done of what is this gonna look, look like? I know there's software programmers that can, that can do it, they can look at it. And I also want to see what it's gonna look like from 95. They say it's going to be not screened, you won't see it from 95, just like they said, the O and M piece is in the special permit application. And we know it's not there.
I just want to respond to, the, the first thing is that, I agree, the landscape plan is not adequate. But the statements that Rob just gave us were that, don't worry, the developer will do what you need to have done. I'll take them at their word on that, but we also need a plan that we can approve, that we can... And then the second thing is, I think, some kind of architectural rendering, rendering or model that shows that, you know, what you can see from, and, and this isn't what you, you built out there, it's not the, when you, when we built the things, right? This is some kind of thing, this is what you can see. And we'll work on that. But we need something, and either it's an architectural rendering or something that, or a landscape rendering.
There are ways that you can...
There's ways to do it.
There are ways.
I addressed this before. And considering how many trees there are between their properties and where the panels are gonna be, it's impossible. Because you'd have to model every single tree data accurate. I mean, whatever we're gonna show, we're gonna bias. Because we can't model every single tree and branch, and that's the only way you can do it. I used to do these, I told, told you this before, if you're placing trees in, you can model it. But if you're modeling the existing trees, it's almost impossible to get exactly what you can see, considering how many trees there are between where we're gonna build it and where they're gonna see it from in their property, on the property line.
But you could, you could do a photograph today.
There's so many different angles you can take. I've done this before. And if, if somebody wants to take the picture, and then we'll try to model it in there?
And then try to model it.
But you have to survey it.
You can photo shop, but you can photo shop it.
Nope, and then it's biased. Photo shopping is incorrect. Because you have to take a picture from a certain location, at a certain height, with the camera turned to, turned at a certain angle. If you turn the camera a little bit, you were out there, there's so many trees and branches, if you turn it a little bit, it's...
It'll bias it. Okay, but let us then look, let us look into whether or not someone can assist us in that.
I think this better, I think, I agree with you. I think he's right, because no matter how you look at it, it's gonna look, look different. And I think there are, there are better ways.
Yeah, there's gotta be better ways.
I think there's another issue here, you're probably about to say, that is the native species versus others. It's if you have a bunch of trees that are poor and unusual for that area, they still look weird.
The other piece about that too is, is when you, when you stand on the deck, on my deck, on Gene's deck, you see high up. And I don't see how that clearcutting the, the skyline is gonna, can be screened. So you have to keep that in mind.
Well, well, I don't know any answer yet.
Right. So that's, right, you don't know. So I just want to make sure that you, you know, that it's, it's out there that you don't, you don't know. And that they have it proven that, that it is. The concern about the email that I gave Martha at the last meeting, I'm really happy that the town is gonna have the stormwater peer review and looked at it as John suggested with the...
Or God, Joe.
Joe, yeah. Paul, sorry. Paul, Jimmy Jones, Paul. As Paul suggested, to have, have it looked at in relation to the bylaw. I mean, the whole DEP right now, to me, that's been resolved, that issue has been resolved, and I don't want to, I know they think we want to rehash it, but we didn't fight it at the DEP level. We could have appealed it then, we chose not to. But the criteria, I believe, and our attorney believes, at the special permit granting at our level, is a higher standard. Because if all they needed was DEP approval, all they would need was a, was basically a con, con con. They wouldn't need to come for a spe, a special permit. The, the pictures that he showed in his thing here about the other solar arrays that were around, those were all deciduous trees. They were green. He doesn't show what it looks like when the leaves fall and what will save, which is a big concern of ours. We, Sarah spoke about that. We would like, if and when it comes to the point, and I don't think it will, but if it does come to the point where we have to determine the kind of trees for the landscape plan, we really want an, an arborist to come work with the town and determine what's the best type of tree for that, and what will not die based on the runoff.
Mr. Chair, we've done that though. That was part of the, the quest. Mr. Lucas, in his letter, has, has responded to the tree types, and would be happy to...
Yeah, I guess I don't, don't know what that is.
That's the...
Do we have that specifically, or is it, it's in the application? All right, let me take that.
And it's actually, it would be fairly simple. I mean, all we need to do is look at the wildlife, wildlife habitat assessment, and we've done this, where, just look at what are the evergreens that are identified in that area? And there's three kinds. There's the eastern white pine, there's the eastern red cedar, and, and pitch pine. And that's the, the third one is a pitch pine, so we just replace our arborvitae with pitch pine. Or make them all red cedar, or make them white pine, whichever, doesn't, doesn't really matter. Again, the reason for the arborvitae was really as a benefit, not as a...
Yeah. I, I still not sure you get rid of, I know Jim has just indicated, don't put something like arborvitae out there, but arborvitae is a known great screener. And it grows fast. So if there's some way arborvitae can be, fit in with everything else, so it doesn't stand out as, you know, the way the, where it really loses it when you've got 10 of them in a row. But if you can integrate them in with the three that you're talking about, I think it can become effective. So we'll, we'll work on that.
We have, I also want to bring, remind you guys that we have letters from realtors saying in their, in their opinion, this will decrease the property value. And those are, those four that are in that electronic packet. I haven't seen anything from, from the applicant saying that, from a realtor, besides this picking and choosing data, that putting a large-scale industrial installation next to a residential neighborhood is not gonna decrease the property value. So the only other thing that I want to say is that, George, when we, when we were here last time, you took offense to me calling this an industrial installation.
I did.
Right. So I have something here from smallbusiness.buylaw.com, and it just, and I, it just, it defines types of zoning that used in municipalities. And I think, when, when I call it an industrial installation, I think you think, what you think I'm calling it is different than what I know I'm calling it. I know it's not gonna be generating pollution, I know it's not gonna be loud, it's not gonna be, you know, that type of industrial. But commercial to me is what was passed, and how I'm using the word industrial. Commercial is commerce. That's what we passed for the special permit on Scotland Road. That was commercial. He's buying, selling products or services. You have cars coming and going, you have commerce, it's, it's related to... Industrial is property used for manufacturing purposes. And that's exactly what this is. They're manufacturing energy. They're, they're fencing it off, they're clear, clearcutting it, and they're, they're manufacturing. They're gonna be creating something. So that's the, in purpose, that's the way I'm using the word industrial. I don't want to confuse people they could have...
Actually, the material that you sent out has referenced in one section that it is commercial.
The material that I sent out?
Page 203.
That, on the, in the thing?
Yeah, 209, one of the other. But it talks about this being a commercial type of operation.
Well, it's commercial, it's commercial...
It is actually a public utility.
It's a public utility.
Mr. Chair, I'm not sure that this really is relevant to, to, to board's review of this project, but there is actually a land court case that came out a couple of years ago that actually discusses wood zoning classification under a particular zoning bylaw that a solar facility would fit into. If you want, I can get that case and submit it.
That'd be helpful.
And I think that's it.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else from the community want to say anything?
I said two questions.
Okay.
Sorry. In section 23C, where it said the runoff curve number is used in the report for the wooded area, the site has been changed from fair hydrologic condition to good, and it corrects the previous overestimation of the runoff. Why would you change it from fair to good when the fair gave you more runoff to work with?
The...
Does that make, is my question sound...
Yeah, no, exactly what you're saying. Give me a minute to, I'll put my thoughts together, so it's clear, my, my response is clear. Let's see. Okay. So it's, it's, so woods in fair versus woods in good. If it were, there is a, a difference in the amount of runoff that we're, that we're required to manage, right? And the difference is pre and post. If you model it in a good condition, pre, there is more runoff to manage post. So, so what I'm saying is, if you had done it in a fair condition before, there would have been less runoff.
Okay, I reversed that, that's why I wanted that clarified. And then my other question was, you said it takes four weeks to install? How long does it take for the clearcutting?
That would probably...
I would say two weeks.
Two weeks, in what time of year, Regina?
Anytime of year. You can't do it in June or July.
The clearing would be limited during the amphibian migration also, which, I don't know exactly when that is, but it's, it's something the third or second night above 50, 45 degrees or something like that in the spring, when it snows. I don't exactly, but, well, we would, we would do it in winter, we would do it in probably two weeks.
Actually, I'd like to follow up on that, because we had another project of similar size that's gonna do clearcutting of about 12 acres, right? Driving range.
Yeah.
And we all had concerns about the noise that is generated by clearcutting. And so I wonder if you could describe to us the process that you think you will be using?
What we use, I don't know if you know what a fellow venture is, but it's a machine that basically takes a tree and...
It's an excavator with a, with a gravel and a saw.
And a saw, and they cut it and lay it down, cut it and lay it down. And we'd be doing, we'd also be stacking...
And will you be doing chipping on site?
Yeah, we would be. Yeah. And they'd go right into trucks, and we'd truck it off. They, conservation did not want people on site, so we'd truck those off. We'd do it during working hours, you know?
Right. But I, I am concerned about the DPA level.
So there's a DPA requirement, you can't have noise in excess of 10 decibels above ambient.
Yep.
So, I mean, the decision, to the extent you get an approval, will contain a condition specifying that you can't, you have to comply with that.
Yeah, and we did test, we did test ambient at the property line, so we know what that is, and we can do that. I know we've done other sites, we've never had a complaint, we've done it in residential areas.
One thing that I've seen is, for sites where there's a good amount of disturbance to, is the preference to do it during winter months when the...
People are indoors.
Exactly, when people are indoors. Blasting, cutting. And there's some obvious advantages to clearing when the ground's covered.
And what about tree stumps?
We clear them all within the fence and leave them outside the fence.
Leave them outside, just...
We'd cut the trees and...
On your property stump? I mean, you're not gonna want that.
No, no, we're not, we're gonna leave them in the ground.
Oh, okay, gotcha, gotcha.
Inside the fence, we're gonna...
Okay, okay. So you're not gonna uproot them?
The ones outside the fence?
Outside the fence, yeah, okay. Then inside the fence, what do you do?
We uproot them, pull them out, and then open them.
Good, good, okay.
Are they gonna be removed from the site?
Yes.
I just have a question. Sorry, I just...
No, no, don't, what are you, sorry.
Joanna True, 150 Main Street. I just want, I just had a question about the, the mural. It said in number one that the tree cutting was 12.6 acres, but here it says in 21A that it's 12.4 acres. Is, is, can you explain that discrepancy?
Yeah.
Thank you. So it's 1 and 21A? So it's one and twenty-one A?
Where would be the best place to look?
This says twelve point four. You know what it probably is, is I think it's, um, I think it's twelve point four of, of tree clearing, um, but, uh, twelve point six of impact, when you consider this, this area, um, uh, for, for the, uh, this area out here as well, but I'll, I'll double check that. Let me see what I can find out.
So, another question, the, um, 'cause I looked in the, in the special permit, um, application for the, um, operation and management, the O and M plan, and it wasn't in there, was it? Where is it now, was it in the...
It's in the stormwater.
It's in the stormwater?
What was it there?
Right, right, well, yeah.
And it shouldn't be part of the stormwater, right? It should be part of the special permit application.
No, it's part of the stormwater, what our management report...
Well, give me...
You looking for an answer?
Yeah.
Or is he just looking for...
No, he just told me it's in the, I don't know.
In the stormwater.
Yeah, it's, this is the new very sites, it's the operation, and it's pretty expensive. It's much more than what we're gonna be doing in the stormwater.
And, and it's not that it's not in the special permit application. It says, refer to stormwater management report appendix C revised October thirty eighth, twenty seventeen. So rather than, you know, giving you two documents that have eighty pages that are the same, um, because this was, this goes in with this, with this. It's just not, not printing the same stuff twice.
So I, I have a, a kind of an organizational and administrative kind of question. So the SMART program is gonna go into effect sometime in April, May, June? I don't know. It has certain criteria that if it's approved, would make it difficult for this project to, uh, be approved. So, I, I actually wanna make sure that we're not doing something which is a silly exercise. And I'd like to have a name of who, who is it that approves this thing at the state?
I can tell you that next time we come, Zach will be here. He's not here tonight, he had to go to another meeting. But he definitely can tell you all means and hows of that very detailed. And he'll tell you actually how it happens and why this is not a waste of time, and that this project has a place.
That's, that's what I wanna find out.
And one, one thing...
I mean, you understand my concern.
Sure, oh, right.
Right?
And one thing to keep in mind is it's, it's the, those are, um, it's not review and approval, it's the, it's the reimbursement rates. So the disincentive, um, that's in there for the clearing of greenfields, means that there, the amount that they'll be reimbursed would be less.
Right.
But it's not that the project wouldn't be approved. It, it's, it's just the...
The incentives are minimized.
Exactly. Um, so the, the reimbursement is just, is, is less.
So I mean, it, it, it's, it's a financial question.
It's a financial question.
And I can tell you, I wouldn't be here if it weren't gonna, if it wasn't gonna be positive for us.
So, I, I, how does Zach email me with that information? Can I do that?
Okay, yes, definitely.
Let me give you my email.
Yep.
Okay, um, anything else from the community? Anything else from you guys? Now, we will have a meeting in two weeks. You're not available. Well, wait a minute, hold for a second. Well, that's important. What, are you, we could adjust our meeting to a special meeting. We can do a special meeting, what about in, uh, three weeks? Twenty-fourth? Oh, good, good. We, we're gonna meet on the twenty-fourth? Everybody else, let's just see?
I'm not here.
Okay.
I'm not here, this is my board.
You can call me.
You can call me. Everybody else okay on the twenty-fourth, bud?
Twenty-four?
Yeah, hold on, we're waiting for confirmation that the room is available.
Actually, Joanna has a question.
Do we need the information from Joe?
We need the information from, the, the major thing we're looking for, I think, is the information from Joe. We're looking for information relative to the discussion of your attorney with Paul. And I, I, well, maybe we just have to go over it, Martha and I, to make sure that we have all the things that we're looking for, but those are the two things that jump out at me right now.
So, for Joe, now you're gonna send me info, he's gonna give me the estimate. You have to pay him before he starts?
Let me see how much is still in escrow.
Okay, did anyone still have something there?
Okay, I don't know, I'll have to check.
Okay, check that.
So I'll check that. If we're in tomorrow, I'll check it as soon as I can.
Okay.
So you're okay for twenty-four?
Yep.
Okay, so, yes.
The room is available on the twenty-fourth, so I'll...
Okay, so we will, uh, meet in three weeks. And so before I adjourn, or ask for adjourn, did someone else, someone wanna raise a question? Sure.
And I, I know you guys don't wanna hear my apologies, but it's a, it's a clarification.
Hold it. No, 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 they can't.
Oh, they can't, oh, okay.
No, they can't.
Oh, they can't, okay.
You have the floor.
I just noticed something that I, I can't tell if this is, I'm not sure exactly if I'm reading this correctly, so...
Yeah.
Okay, um, the statement, um, under eleven A was, um, number one, there's no clear economic, um, impact trying with respect to pre and post installation residential property values within three hundred meters. But this graph, am I reading this correctly, that the homes and when within three hundred meters, their property values did fall? Did they not, I mean, are these, these ones in, in, um, in the ones that are in gray, and then those black, in black, does that mean the sale value of the home? I can just show it to you, turn it, it's, you take this...
Yeah, I can actually read that.
Say, okay?
Yeah, let's see, yes.
I have my glasses on. Okay, so I meant this part, and then, and then here, does that show the sale value?
Right, so the, the, the dark, uh, the bold is, is when it actually, um, when there was a, um, was a sale. The gray is the estimates.
Okay.
And then there's, and then, um, uh, yellow is pre, green is post. So in this case, what you see is, so the, the way that I would judge, did it fall or rise? This would be a fall, right? So, and this was four twenty and four ten. And, um, and then this would be, this wouldn't, you wouldn't have evaluated that. This would have been, what would this have been? This would have been a fall.
Well, it fell because it was seven eighty-eight, now it's, it sold for five seventy-seven, it would, so that's a, that's a drop as well.
Sure, but that's pre, so that, yeah.
Pre, oh, okay.
Pre-installation.
So, yeah, it's really hard to say.
I know, I know.
It could be, it could've been the year before, it could've been, you know, two months before. It's really...
No question, no question, yeah.
Okay, I just, I just wasn't sure that this graph actually supported that statement, that's what I...
Yeah, or seven or eight.
Two thousand and seven, that was the beginning of, uh, of the, of the real estate depression?
Yeah, I noticed that it started, the graph starts right at the, kind of the crash, so, yeah.
Yeah, at the crash, we, we have short memories.
Oh, no, well, someone...
Okay, we're gonna, uh, end the meeting right...
Not thirteen.
Yeah.
What, I'm gonna, no, no, not gonna close it, I'm gonna end the session.
And, and Mr. Chair, I had one more question, this one.
All right.
This is a total, oh, what, what's that?
Um, uh, just, uh, just a moment ago, you mentioned, um, the concerns about the landscaping plan, and we'd like to, we'd like to, uh, uh, come up with something that would be, um, acceptable. And we're wondering what, um, what suggestions, uh, what process you might have, uh, for us to do that. So, uh, this issue aside from the, if we model or, or that sort of stuff, um, but is there, um... You know, I think that a tree species piece is, is a point of discussion, I, um, but is there, what, what in particular...
It's species and size.
Yeah, species and size, okay.
So think it over in your own mind. What do you think would screen it? Not a three to four foot white pine.
Yeah, arborvitae, I hate to say it, but, um...
No, you can put a eight to ten foot white pine.
Yeah.
And you can put a ten to twelve foot arborvitae as an accent piece to help that along.
Okay, I see where you're going with this, okay.
But not a deer, the deer just eat those though.
Each what?
The arborvitae, the deer eat all of them.
They have, they have arborvitae, this is the only one, this is because around my pool, they put arborvitae that specifically deer won't eat.
Yeah, I haven't...
So, if you look at, I, out back, I have arborvitae that the deer do eat. And you can actually, when you go by tripe, and you'll see a row of arborvitae that...
Yeah, they just love, there are some, sometimes they don't eat them, so arborvitae. All right, now, are we pretty well then done for this evening? So we need a motion to continue the public hearing.
I move to continue the public hearing until January twenty-fourth, seven fifteen.
Second on that? Second from Peter, all those in favor?
Aye.
So done. I need a motion to close the meeting.
You'll adjourn?
We'll adjourn, second.